...business using remote participation via Zoom. We ask that those of you not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion at the moment, please mute your microphone to avoid interruptions outside the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall. Our first item is the Police Benevolent Association, CBA. Kevin, if you could let us know the status of that. I don't think we're taking a vote tonight, is that correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair. So Monday night, I let you folks know there was some wordsmithing, something that changed the essence of the contract. Just for more clarity, the uniform allowance specific, sorry, the uniform outlined in Attachment A of the existing document during negotiations early in the process was acknowledged that it was outdated and that we should take a closer look at it. The unions asked that we do such before we ratify, firm up the CBA. So the rest of the terms that are outlined in MOA are fine. This is just to look at it in addition. Chief feels strongly in agreement that it needs to be. I've looked at it, I agree. I don't have language, I was hoping to have language to share with you for tonight to go over, but as soon as I do have language, both Chief's working on it, I'm working on it, and their lawyers working on it for Attachment A, I'll share that with you folks in an email for your review. And if you have any comments or questions, please send that back. My hope is to target the 13th, September 13th meeting, to then have a full ratification of the CBA with the inclusion of the updates of the MOA and the additional updates to Attachment A as discussed.
Will it have signatures from the union at that time, Kevin, for us to vote on?
That's, that'll be the goal, as always. We'll make sure we get, if we get the language tightened up, you folks to review, send that over to the union, union will sign, and we'll have the meeting on the 13th with those signatures on it.
Okay, so if the board has any comments for you, then just to email it back to you so that you can then be in touch with the union?
That would be great. And I'll send that, I'm hoping the next 20, maybe tomorrow is my goal, to have that back from the union so I can, in a chance to look at it, send out to you folks.
Kevin, since this has been through so many rounds, is this literally just down to language around the uniform wording? That's it?
Yeah, and for all intents and purposes, the MOA we already ratified is a legally binding document. It changes the terms of the deal. So your retro pay and new monies has already been established. CBA is just the final, complete version with the updates on it. And so we'll get, like I said, it's, in this, specifically to your question, literally 11th hour, but I agree, let's get it right. We could push this out two weeks, incorporate it now, and then just fully be done with it.
Thanks. Yep, got it. Thanks.
Any other comments for Kevin? Okay, let's move on to the 2022 town goals. So the document that is up on Board Docs is the document that resulted when I took all the items that we discussed at our last meeting. And I didn't take off any or add any, I just reorganized them, consolidated them under five categories. So tonight, I'd like us to do two things. One, to discuss if we're comfortable with the five categories that I identified. And then two, if we'd like to remove or reword, or add to any of the subcategories under there. And then, once we've done that, to take a vote on the document. So if I could open it up first to the categories, the five categories that I identified, either any changes, suggested changes to that, or are people comfortable with it?
It's a nice break after trying to get Kevin to a series of five categories. I thought that was pretty creative. I think that worked out well.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it, Lynn.
Okay. Great, Marshall and Boyd, any?
Yep. No, I mean, I like, I like the look of it. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I, yeah, I like the looks of it. I don't have any problem in any of it all. I've got my own personal opinion that I'd like to interject at some point in time that Lynn and I have talked about privately. When that's appropriate, I'll be glad to voice my opinion.
Great, thank you, Boyd. Okay, so why don't we just jump in and take each of the five categories with the items underneath? And we can, you know, if you have any comments, whether you'd like to modify the words on something, or get rid of it altogether, or if you have anything to add. What I'd like to just mention on here is that usually we have focused as a board on the high level categories. So, you know, spurring economic development, making town services more efficient and effective, et cetera. And then the details of it, last year, we put the details in there to give people in town an understanding of what that category meant to us, and some of the things that would fall under there. And this, we've flushed out a little bit more, and if we want to scale back on the detail here, I'm fine with that. But I think flushing this out gives Kevin a good idea of what we mean by that category so that he then in turn can create his objectives and know where our focus is in each of those areas. So, under economic development, Boyd, why don't I let you go first because there was another subitem that you wanted to add under that?
Well, I, I've been through this several times, and I agree with most of what's said here. The only thing that I wanted to say to the group as a whole was the fact that I would, I think personally, I think we ought to begin a more aggressive policy toward Flomp and the shopping center, to work toward some way of getting him out of here. I'm sure that there are a number of people around town that are saying, why doesn't the Board of Selectmen do something to get that place straightened out? Well, we all know that we've got legal issues, we know that we can't do a heck of a lot, but I'm just saying I'd like the group as a whole to think about what we can do to do something, to put some pressure on this guy, because it looks like we're doing nothing. Now, I know that Lynn and, and the DCHD have worked toward doing some things, and I appreciate everything they're trying to do, but I want to, I, I'd just like to figure out a way to get more aggressive. I went to the, to the webpage, the state webpage on eminent domain, and, and that creates a whole bunch of issues for us, because if you're going to take it by eminent domain, first of all, you have to have the right reason. And I think there's some, I think there's some possibilities there. When you got a piece of property that's not taken care of, when you got a piece of property that's derelict, when you got a piece of property that the citizens aren't pleased with, I think there's some room there to maneuver. But the fact of the matter is it gets worse than that, because now you've got to come up with the money to buy it, and, and that becomes another issue. But I'm not so sure that if we couldn't, if we couldn't move in that direction, I have a hunch that a lot of people might say, I'll vote to buy that place and then turn it over to a developer that can turn it into something we want. Now, having said all that, I would just back off and say, I wanted to bring that up to the board as a group and say, that's where I'd like to go, and see if there's anybody else agrees with me. And we don't need to discuss it tonight, we don't need to decide where to go tonight, but I'd just like to put that out there to let, let the group know that I'd like to move forward with something more aggressive, because this guy is going to do nothing on his own.
So Boyd, I'd like to say that, here, here, I think that is incredibly important, and I applaud it 100%, and think that that is incumbent on us as a board to address and address, you know, address properly. So I, I think that's a great suggestion.
Thanks, Cam.
I mean, I do think we all know it is both the literal and figurative heart of downtown at this point, and is doing nothing, and it's kind of, all of the hard work that the ECDC and Sarah Guido's group is doing, all of that, it's like, well, that's, a lot of it is on the fringes of this shopping center. My only thing is, my understanding is this board has kind of been down this road before to, to no satisfaction, because there are exceedingly few legal avenues that this board can pursue. I mean, if there are other ones that we haven't tried, I'm 110% on board with, with doing that. I just don't want to see us bang our heads against a wall when it's going to get us nowhere. Particularly if we're only doing it for, you know, the cosmetic purpose of saying, look, we're trying, which is fine if we think there's a chance of, of success, I'm all for trying, but let us not just do what has been done before that failed, I guess.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, I don't disagree with it, but I don't think it's cosmetic. I mean, I, I think, I don't know how aggressively this has been pursued in the past, and Dick and Boyd and Lynn who've been around for longer, you know, can speak to that, but I, I think it's our responsibility to get more aggressive with every passing year, that this guy is still in charge and turning this, you know, it looks like a dump, and I, I think we absolutely have to do what we can. I know you don't want to talk about it now, but I mean, that's, that's a hot button for everybody on this, on this call.
Just for anybody who's on the call, just a little background on this. So Mr. Flomp's property is privately owned. So the town can only take action if he is violating some law, regulation, something that, that, you know, we can ask our building inspector to go and address. And there have been things that Glenn in the past have gone down and spoken to Mr. Flomp about, and they have been addressed. We did, we asked our legal firm to do an extensive analysis of legal options, and their recommendation coming back is that there is nothing substantial for you to take action on. It's a piece of private property. If he's not interested in upgrading it, or if he's not interested in selling it, there isn't anything you can do. We could attempt to, but it would cost tens of thousands of dollars in court with no particular, you know, assurance, assurances that we're going to win. So I, when Boyd mentioned this, I said, I am all for putting down onto the goals to pursue opportunities for improvement of the shopping, of the village shopping center. Mr. Flomp, while he may not have any interest in upgrading his particular building, he has been very cooperative in allowing us to make improvements or changing on, changes on his property. And he has said, I give you the go ahead, I think that, I trust that you're going to do the right thing. And so there are a couple of exciting ideas that we have for the entrance to that shopping center, that I think would be worthwhile continuing to work cooperatively with Mr. Flomp. That being said, as I said, I don't mind putting it down as an opportunity, because there may be things we hadn't thought of, or ways to approach Mr. Flomp, or, or ideas that were not raised previously, to find some way to improve that property, working with the owner.
Thank you, Lynn. Cam, I would, I would tell you that two or three, at least two or three years ago, KNP chimed in and said, we've looked at all the possibilities you could do legally, and there isn't much you could do, expect, except spend a lot of money and probably not achieve much. Okay? So we know that there's some issues there. I'd just like to, I'd just like to spend a little bit of time with all of us getting a little more creative about how we might do this. And I don't know, I don't know what those avenues are.
Like to try avenues.
Certainly worth having the discussion again and looking at our options again. That's, that, that I couldn't agree more with. I just don't want to create a false impression, again, for anyone who might be listening, that we have some magic wand that we can wave and suddenly, you know, the shopping center is going to be all fixed up.
I wish, I wish we had a magic wand.
Did you have a comment you were going to add?
Yes, I thought you summarized things pretty well, Lynn, as far as what the real situation is and the history that we've had. But I think it is also as part of that obvious that we don't have any real leverage. The question is, do we want to go and work with vinegar, or do we want to work with honey? And I think the approach to date has been to try to work with honey. And example, Lynn, you've talked with him, and as far as fixing up the entrance way there, if he's willing to have us involved with that, and willing to let us do something there, I think that's the first step. But the use of eminent domain is just a folly, and it will certainly turn any owner off.
Yeah, in the case of eminent domain, my understanding, and I'm no lawyer, is that there has to be some significant reason by the town to take over a piece of property, if it was to put a new road, or a bridge, or, or something to connect parts for safety reasons or whatever. But if we took it over to build another shopping center, I think we'd find ourselves in, in some significant trouble.
We're not going to find ourselves in trouble, I think we're just going to lose, and we're going to make a greater enemy. So I think it's folly to talk about eminent domain as a solution. It just, we've, we've done it, and we've asked enough people, we know, we know American law, we know what the United States Constitution says about property rights, that's where it all starts, and it's a very important piece of our government, our, our society. It, it needs to be a specific, this doesn't play at all. This gets you into the Kelo versus, Kelo versus New London, and we know what happened with that. The state's backlash on that one, and have, most states have gone, gone ahead and tightened up their laws on private property rights and exclusion of any eminent domain efforts. Not all states, that number did.
The, the trouble that I mentioned, that I think we would get into, is both, it'd be a financial investment, a significant one, and we would have shut off any possibility of working with the current owner. Those would be my concerns, but with that being said, it sounds like everybody's in agreement to add an item in here, and for a lack of another alternative, I just put pursue opportunities for improvement of the village shopping center. And that gives us the ability to talk about it and pursue options and see what we could come up with. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
A very good way to phrase that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I understand that I didn't, I didn't come here to talk about the solutions or how to solve this problem. I came here to talk to us as a group to think about creating some sort of an environment where we can begin thinking about how we can resolve this issue, because I think it's a problem, and I think it's going to continue to fester unless we can figure out a way to fix it.
Yeah, no, it's a good addition, Boyd. So any other changes or modifications to the verbiage underneath economic development?
Yeah. I do want to just, and somewhat of a follow-up, Lynn, we're talking about it, but we need to talk about it. You mentioned that the owner has been responsive, and certainly you mentioned the building inspector, and the other one was the Board of Health. The Board of Health had various things that they looked at, and they got responses, and so the, the owner is wise enough to be responsive to the town if there's an issue that is part of the law or part of our regulations. As far as trying to do anything, you also summarized well, Lynn, that if we start something down that road, we've really turned everything off. And I thought that we were starting to make some progress. The one thing I might suggest for individuals or the, as a team, Boyd might do, is write down a wish list of what it is that we would want the owner to do to make us all happy, and perhaps with some priorities in it. Now, we don't necessarily have to give it to him, but at least it gives us some ideas of what would make the difference so that people would be happy.
Kevin, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I've got just, maybe this is a good time, maybe not, just let me know if you want, but I can give you maybe an update on sort of things we've been working on behind the scenes, just to get everybody, it's come up, so maybe it's, as, getting everybody at the same point. So I've met with Mr. Flomp a couple of times, and he's been very agreeable, building some relationships, building some trust. We've talked about some of the bigger concepts and smaller ideas as well that we want to accomplish there. We've talked about what he's willing to possibly do for improvements on the building. And I know he, he is, from a capacity standpoint primarily, but also from a financial standpoint, he has no intention to do anything in the, in the near future, dramatic, such as a tear down and rebuild. If zoning through a master plan were to change to allow for, by right, possibly different things that go in there, or, you know, maybe the height restrictions are changed, things that could trigger an investor to make it a financial, a business opportunity or financially worthwhile to pursue something, it could create the opportunity for somebody to do something there. So that, that is one trigger. Zoning can trigger investment, potentially. The other thing that we're working on is the immediate, and right now, for instance, we talked about the shopping center, but to me, more important is the Santander space, that's vacant. And I met with the brokers, I talked with Peter, I said, I'd like to meet with your brokers, he said, that's fine. So I've met with now the Drummond Group, I think, three times. We've actually gone in the garage, the highway garage, we've gone through the plaza, we've met and talked about the spaces and what they're capable of, of doing there, and what they might want to target for vendors. And I explained to them locally what our goals are, and really gave the sales pitch on Topsfield. I believe that they were very much won over with the idea that this town is committed to doing more, and they would like to see certain things in certain places, such as a restaurant at the Santander space. I asked what their vision is for that, and they said, well, Peter wants to put another bank in there because it's built out, it's fit out for a bank. And I just shook my head, I said, no, that's an opportunity for restaurants, you go outdoor dining on three sides of it. I mean, it's a really amazing opportunity. I told him I redesigned the sidewalks for him, they wouldn't have to pay a penny, we'd do it for him to put the outdoor dining in there, if they got a good reputable restaurant in there. And I could see the, the wheels turning, they said, well, you know, we could move the laundromat into the plaza and do, take that whole space, it's around 3,000 square feet, and do something really interesting. And so they were going to talk to a couple of the, the groups that they work with, groups that are financially backed, because that's going to be important for anybody who's investing to make a real change in that space or any of the spaces. The landlord's not going to do the, do the work in a timely fashion. I know they've lost tenants in buildings because the landlord's not willing to, in a timely fashion, do tenant improvements. So it's really going to have to be somebody who is well backed, willing to do it on their own nickel, reduce the rent rate by doing their own fit out. But that means we're going to have to get somebody who's, who's got the backing right. So, and this Drummond Group, I know they're legitimate, they work in PBD, they work in Beverly, they work in Salem, they've got the right sized portfolio of, of clients and networks that can help drive businesses here. Last time I spoke with the Drummond Group, again, I think is the trigger to having anything happen, because if they, it's one thing for us to go to them, and them being Peter, and say, we want this, we want that. It's another thing for the actual broker who can show a financial model and actual tenant with a, with an LOI and say, here, we've got this guy ready to go if you're willing to do X, Y, and Z. And I believe the Drummond Group's believing it. Last time I spoke, he said that they, they've talked to a number of groups looking for space, and they actually said, well, what, you know, they wanted to go like Salem, said, well, what about Beverly? I'm sorry, what about Topsfield? And they, they, they're trying to sort of sell Topsfield a little bit on our behalf and on behalf of Peter's property in this, in this space. So there's some traction happening right now. I think more importantly, again, I go back to the, real dynamic change is going to happen through the zoning process or a sale of the asset. And I think that those are the things that we don't, we can, we can help in those processes in different, different ways, and for the master plan, you know, we can drive that. If, and for a potential sale, we could support that and help facilitate something through the project review team and helping a potential purchaser of the property to understand what they'll need to do to go through the process and streamline that process for them. But those are some of the things that we've been working on. Madam Chair spoke earlier about Pocket Park, they seem open to that, infill opportunities to add more square footage, which I think is a good thing in the downtown, is a possibility, although they're concerned about the optics of the view of the back plaza if they build something in front of it. The plaza's not really showing well, but those businesses still want to be able to have people see it when they enter in. So there are certain limitations around that, but we're having those discussions. I guess the bottom line is, there's a lot of work happening on the back, backside, nothing's going to happen overnight, but it's certainly, you know, I've been meeting with a couple of different groups myself, people I know, and I've talked about Topsfield, talked about the plaza and the opportunity, grabbed coffee with a couple of people recently, talking about that. Hopefully one of these people, one of these fish grab, you know, take, take the bait, or they, they, they latch on and they, they come in the Topsfield to really make that dynamic change. But it's really, it's, I think it's talking to outside people who could be investors, working with a brokerage firm and finding specific restaurants that we want, or other types of businesses that we might want at that plaza.
Thanks, Kevin. And, and the only thing I would add, and then I'd ask if we could just move on, because this is a very large discussion, it would take a lot of time, but I, I think kind of the, the broken window theory here applies definitely to Topsfield. So the work that TCP is doing in the redesign of that Main Street, and then working to enhance the frontage of the buildings, clean up and redesign those beds that are there, put in seating that is coordinated and looks consistent across the front, something that ties into what the bake shop has done. Each of those changes that goes in will start to elevate the look of the Main Street, Main Street, and show that Topsfield is committed to making continual improvement. So I think these small incremental changes, while in and of themselves, each one is not monumental, I think taken together, it will show a different direction for the town. So, but if I could, if, if we have nothing else on economic development, if we could move on to the communication and transparency.
Could I just go back? Now, this is not on the shopping center, but item number D says, develop brand marketing campaign for Topsfield. I was wondering about that. I'm not sure that the town of Topsfield particularly wants to do some kind of a branding. People of Topsfield kind of like what we have here, and I'm, I'm not sure what this branding is going to do for us.
If I could just, oh, go ahead, Cam.
Well, last time we were together, I thought we were going to augment that language, because campaign was, was wrong. I think, I thought we agreed that we were going to strike the word campaign. I think, Dick, that was talking about the consistency that we are looking for from the website, from, you know, the signage, it was, it was continuity throughout the town as opposed to, you know, something else. So I, I think you're thinking big, and, and we scaled this thing back in our last work session, I believe.
And it may in fact belong more under communication.
Communication, yeah.
Than, than anything.
Except that the benefit.
Touch and feel, absolutely. We've always been at that, this idea of some colors that are those of Topsfield, how they, and how they blend one to the next. I absolutely agree with that, but this reads a little different than that. Let me leave it at that at this moment, but I, I do think that the wording that's there is worthy of further discussion, next to communication transparency.
Let me just add one more thing on that, and then we can talk about this when we dive into the details of it. But TCP has done a phenomenal job of putting up on their website all that Topsfield has to offer. So when we're talking about trying to reach out to businesses, saying, why would you want to come here? Or for people looking to buy a home, why would you want to come here? It is marketing, so to speak, the town, and highlighting what's so beautiful about it, and, and the assets that we have. And so I think that a little bit is, and I'm not sure which area that goes under, it's, it's not exactly communicating with residents only, because it's, it's communicating with people outside of town, why they would want to come here for our events, or for our stores, or for our restaurants, or whatever. It's appealing to businesses, possibly who wants to come and buy a, a shopping center at some point, why would that make sense? Because of all that the town has to offer. So we could discuss where it goes.
It's basically, it's basically a communication piece that drives economic development. So that's, that's why it, it goes under both.
It could, on either one. So it, it doesn't make a difference to me which it goes under. I mean, would you rather see that go under the communication? We can certainly.
Well, I mean, because it almost, I mean, I guess, well, yeah, because it would probably fall, at least in some part, under the town website, to some.
Partly, yep. Also the wayfinding signs.
A lot of this, you know, to, to draw a hard black and white line between economic development and communication, or probably any two of these categories is hard.
Yeah, they go together.
They're all, you know, so that, to that, I would say, it really doesn't matter where you, you slot it. Me, as a board, know what we're talking.
And I'll take off campaign, because that was heading in a direction people were not thinking. Kevin?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I've, I've got a broad question, then maybe just real quick, specific question on the, on the brand and marketing. First one is, you know, there's a lot of information here, some really great information, things we've talked about, things we aspire to, things we're working on. And I know recently we just did the review for the town administrator, and, and this was part of that process, and I'm just forward looking to next year, and just for clarity purposes for anyone on the line, and, and for myself too. These are focus areas versus completed transactions. Is that a fair assessment on the subcategories?
What do you mean completed, that we expect it in one year?
That's my point.
Yeah, yeah, no. I, I, I'm sure there are two, some things in here that, I mean, just as when we did the review, we said, this was done, this was done well, but is still in progress. I think that's what a lot of this, you know, on a case by case basis, no, I, I wouldn't, I don't want to speak for everyone, but speaking for myself, this is, you know, a page and a half of stuff. I, I don't know that we're going to be there in five years, much less one, so.
Yeah, this is definitely short and long term. Kevin, for you, for your objectives, I would think you would take from this and say, this is what's actually doable. and say, this is what's actually doable in this year with the resources I have, so that I'm not spread all over the place and I'm not working 60 hours, that you would hone that in for a single year.
I appreciate that. I just, that, that's great. I just want to make sure I kind of had that as, frame that as we go through this. Specifically in development and the brand marketing. Is the expectation on that, you know, we, 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 is this something that, we don't have an economic development planner yet. We don't necessarily have money set aside unless we get a grant that would allow us to have a third party consultant per se come in to sort of develop a, a brand and marketing campaign. What we've been doing so far on that is, like I've had chief to perform traffic counts on 97 and on South Main and High and Main Street to give us a sense of how much vehicle traffic. That's an important data point for somebody who might want to come in to look and open up a business, retail or restaurant or other. But, you know, from a comprehensive branding, is it more just gathering the data at this point versus having somebody come in? Or is this something where it would be a priority to board to put it into a capital item? Or maybe not capital, but from a free cash appropriation or on the budget side to add it somewhere.
Now that you say that, Kevin, I, you know, I would be comfortable actually taking it off and incorporating it in some of the other things that we have. So for instance, too, I don't know if it was Marshall or Cam who mentioned it, improving the town website, ensure consistent branding with existing look and feel of building signs, et cetera, you know? And when you are doing the downtown and you, you're enhancing the frontage, it's going to be consistent with that look and feel in the branding. So maybe not as a standalone item, but it gets scooped up into the other items. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
It should be an automatic consideration at this point. I mean, you know, when, when anything is being released, we should make sure that there's consistency and it reflects not only the color palette, but the core values of, of what we talk about all the time. So I, I think if it's in our DNA, we're good. You know, I think that's, I think that's great, but I, I think it's lazy not to pay attention to it. And I, and I do think that it is more a reflection of trying to attract residents to Topsfield necessarily than business. I don't think business gives much of a hoot about, you know, the color palette you're using on your signage. I think it's more about people who drive through and say, this is really pretty. This is really quaint. This is a nice little place. That was, I think, the original spirit of it.
Yeah, because I think in the case of businesses, someone like a Walmart is not going to come here because it doesn't match who we are as a town. So it, it's always considered in each of these components. Maybe it doesn't have to be, you know, a broken apart. So I don't know, would, would people say leave it on or take it off and then just have it incorporated into other items?
I want people to hear what you said, because I've been repeatedly accused of wanting to bring a Walmart.
I think in the idea of other items, because the way you describe the other items, they're more specific than a general thing such as this. And I think that would be helpful for us. And Cam, you mentioned the idea of the people coming to the town and what they see. This is a note that I put to myself on this particular item. Topsfield's treasure is our inviting rural and historic appearance and feel. Topsfield is an oasis of nature and tranquility, parks, trails, open space. We, we are really blessed. We have state parks, we have our own parks, all kinds of trails through it. We have the river that runs through it with Autobahn. Maybe that's open space to some people, but it, it means that it's protected areas. How many places can you take a river in an area within 100 miles of Topsfield and not see houses for seven miles? I mean, that is really, we have a treasure here and we have to be careful. And that's probably what we want to brand out. I think that's what you're saying when you say branding, you want people to come in.
It's, it's what I said, it's what I said two weeks ago to the, to the, to the word. 100%. It's why I moved here. 100%.
Right. And the question in part is, I have no problem with, so to speak, telling future residents while, future, yeah, future residents while they want to come here. But the good news is, I understand from real estate that they're kind of beating down the doors to get in here. So it's not as if we have a problem trying to sell the town. People tend to see the things that I mentioned and tend to like them. And one of the things, obviously, including the things that I said there, as far as that appearance, is what people see on the website, on the state website as far as the schools. It's strong, and that's why people, families are coming here, because they're looking for the, the schools in addition to having the things that I mentioned.
So can I just do a kind of a sense of the board? Should D, develop brand marketing Topsfield come off? Off, one off? I say off.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, because it, it, it exists. I think we know it's in our head and it exists in part of the communication. So, yeah.
Okay, great. All right. Moving on then, communication transparency. Any changes, additions?
Excuse me, Lynn, not, not to change our plans here too much, but I do notice that Scott Morrison and Sharice are on. And we, we, we're going to do the communications with them. I don't, I don't know the extent to which we expect other people from the, the schools to come on or what we want to do. But I hate to keep people waiting if they're not specifically interested in this, especially at a working session.
Well, there's nothing in particular where we were asking the school to speak to any of these.
No, no, I, they're here because I asked them to be here.
For a particular category, Marshall?
Yes, they're, they're here to talk about the communication, because they, the schools and the school committee created a Facebook page.
Okay.
That's something we're going to be talking about.
Okay, so that brings us to the next one, which is communication and transparency. So I don't know, Marshall, if, I mean, we've kind of talked about these. We know what was under here. Maybe if you want to have the schools speak to this a little bit, we were having communication as a separate item after the goal.
After this?
Yeah, to speak to what they've done, what you want to do, what you envision. So that was after the goal development. I don't know if you need them to speak during the goal development.
No, it, it, it's, that's more for our communication afterwards, our discussion afterwards.
All right. Well, welcome, Dr. Morrison and Sharice. Nice to have you here.
Hey, Lynn, hey, guys, everybody. Nice, thank you for having us.
Hopefully, we'll be able to move through these pretty quickly so that we can get to the communication.
I predicted we'd be done with this part by 7:30. So I feel bad that I, I clearly missed the mark on that.
Marshall, how many board meetings have you been to?
You know, I, I'm forever optimistic.
Okay, well, we will help you to move quicker. So are there any changes to the communication and transparency section?
Not as, it, it looks good to me.
Yep, agreed.
Okay, town services operations. This one, the IT got incorporated because it really does support all of the services and the operations. So anything on here that people would like to modify or does it look okay?
Oh. The implement salary survey. Implementing something we haven't seen? Is that what we're saying?
Um, no, maybe implements the wrong word. It's actually making it happen. It may be initiate. Kevin, where does the salary survey stand right now?
So our goal, our goal is to have it completed before the budget cycle. So we are going to, Debbie and I talked about this last week. We have two vendors who we've met with, provided quotes for, very similar on the quote side. And we just need to pick one and start moving the process forward on that front.
Okay, so we're initiating, we're evaluating, and then what's the third verb here? Because we may not be taking their recommendation. We don't know what we're going to decide after seeing the survey.
Well, we don't consider. We don't know until we initiate it. We got to take the survey before we do anything else.
But we want to do more than just initiate because it will be done by December. So we have a half a year to actually decide what to do relative to salaries.
I, I would say that there may be two, two items. If we want to put in details about what we're doing, the first would be to conduct a salary survey. And the second would be the idea of modifying the, the existing, I don't know that we want to, but I assume that, I, I think we do know we want to do something about the grid and how we're set up with our personal rules and regulations and how that grid works. We, we know that that's an issue. We've dealt with it for several budget cycles now. That needs to be changed, it seems to me. I think we all know that there's some kind of a change. I think that's a separate item. It'll be dependent upon perhaps the salary survey.
I mean, basically what we're saying is we need.
Salary survey, we know that we cannot live with something like two and a, two and three quarter percent in steps plus whatever is an increase in the grid overall. So it's, I think we can put down something about modifying our grid approach or something to that effect. And have this idea of conducting a salary survey, that, fine, that's a separate, separate thing actually. But the two of them will come together. One will help the other, perhaps.
Is it part of the point of the salary survey to give us an idea of where we truly stand? And, and therefore, really, when you start talking about the grid, we have to look at the survey, consider the survey, you know, analyze whatever verb you want to put in there, but the one comes before the other, I think.
I, I'll offer this thought. We have an overall category of town services operations and human resources under it. And so these are some of the actions under the resources. So as you pointed out, Lynn, we may very well have a salary survey completed by November, December. That does not mean that we can't add as part of the overall goal, knowing that we need to do something with the human resources to do another, add another thing. Well, okay, we did that particular thing under that goal. This is something else that we want to do under that goal. We, we don't have to have everything written out here.
No, but you know what we could do, similar to implement appropriate HR audit recommendations? We could say, conduct salary survey and implement appropriate recommendations. So that gives us leeway. Because there is action that's required before the end of the year.
I have to admit, I did like that word appropriate in the second item.
Yeah, so we could do the same thing.
That's a good selection of wording.
Is that okay with everybody?
That, that sounds good.
It works, Lynn.
Okay, great. All right. Anything else with B through E?
So I, I am concerned with the extent to which we refer to IT improvements on number two.
Okay.
The regional IT. I am not sure we understand what it is that we're saying there. I, I think what we want to do is continue to invest in on considering the retail IT approach or moving closer to implementing something. But we don't know what it is. There's, there's, somebody would say, wait a minute, you know, we actually did implement it. We signed an agreement to spend $6,000 whatever dollars with Danvers and they help us based on that money. And we get so many hours a year spread out over the year to help us out. So we implemented an IT. I'm just worried that that, it, it doesn't really say where we are with it and know what it is that we're attempting to do in the next year.
And I'm not sure we do know right now. Kevin, other than cybersecurity and installing the fiber network, is there anything in particular you know that we'd like to address with the regional IT group?
It goes back to, I think, obviously, when we brought it up and some of the, the, the value, potential cost savings from using those resources locally than the, using the third party retrofit at a higher rate per hour. For instance, one of the things we're doing is we're reaching out to Danvers IT about helping us with Munis rollout, which is a late one of these as well. And specifically our licenses and the appropriate access that people have on the system, the permissions. It's a very tedious IT, very IT focused type of activity. Last, end of last week, I, Donna and I were talking about leveraging our IT agreement to have them do it. Danvers is looking to get on some Munis. They're not currently. This might be a really great learning experience for them. And it would allow us to leverage their IT professionals to, to help us with those existing licenses that need to be updated. So that's.
What about this, Kevin? Because if we don't know exactly, and it's premature to put you on the spot to say, what specifically would you utilize? Because there's still a lot to be looked into, whether it's feasible cost savings. If we put optimize use of regional IT, something so that you can come back, because this is a guideline for you and your objectives, you can come back to us in three months and say, you know what, we, we've uncovered that these are the, the highest priorities to get the best bang for our buck out of this agreement, out of the regionalization. And, and that way we give you some flexibility, because I don't think we're in a position right now to know what's the best course to go down here, what's most effective for our money. I don't know how others feel.
Yeah, I, I, I think at times we're trying to be too specific in what we're saying. And this would be a case where I think that if we can be more general, and, and I think your verbiage is pretty general, if that's good.
Okay.
The implement is very specific. The details are very missing in a sense, because I don't know what implement the regional IT represents. So I, I like the idea that you have, Lynn, and Marshall, as you point.
Optimize, turn implement into optimize.
Optimize use of, yeah.
Okay, so optimize use of IT regionalization, and then we'll have Kevin come back and be able to speak to it? Regionalization agreement or IT regionalization?
Kevin, does that work for you?
Yeah, that's fine. I just, for relativity sake, last year, this was on our list and it was, we had a shorter bullet. It was just said regional IT. For what it's worth, I, I mean, we're doing, we're digging a little deeper, getting a little.
We didn't even have a verb last year. Got to have a verb in there.
Well, to Dick's point, we actually finalized the agreement. So we now are in a regional IT situation. So now we're at the next step where we're trying to optimize and get the most out of that agreement that we're paying. I don't know what it is, $7,000 a year for or whatever we came up with.
$4,100.
Of course, that's, sorry, $4,100. Okay.
Interestingly enough, there's two totally different thoughts here. One of them is to try to get some specific use of the consulting that we have of $4,000. That's fine with me. But I think the other is, in a sense, to continue to cooperate with the consortium to find ways to create an effective regional IT. I mean, that's a long explanation, but that's really kind of what's going on under the covers. And it may take a week to do. It may take 10 years. It's not 10 years. But it may take several years to, to get even a good start on it, no less many years to totally implement something like that. I'll, I'll leave it at what we talked about, though. That's fine.
Okay.
I like, I like the word optimize.
Okay. All right, moving on. Anything else underneath this one that needs any change?
So just, just to go back on the Munis thing, could, could I understand? Has, has Danvers implemented the self-serve module?
Kevin?
Kevin? I'm sorry. We just got a hot COVID mythology.
That's fine. The question was, has Danvers implemented self-serve on their Munis in any category?
So Danvers is not on Munis currently. They have not.
Okay, didn't, because you referenced them, I thought that there was something, yeah, okay.
They're looking to transition.
They're only looking at the security, how to do security. I, I would be glad, if you, if you want, I would be glad to come in and help. We'll set up some matrices that we know who the people are. And I had, unfortunately, many years ago, a lot of experience in setting up permissions. And, and I will say that Munis is very robust. That's the good news and the bad news. It is very robust in its ability to control.
Well, that would be a good discussion to have offline. Thank you, Dick, for volunteering. So anything changing on the wording for the remainder of item three?
No, looks good to me.
Okay, moving to four, which is fiscal management. The only, the only thing I put a little change in C, create a town meeting warrant that meets school and town needs while minimizing overall tax burden to residents. Instead of just specifically saying an override, I just made a little more general.
So a, a goal is an objective. We may make or not make certain goals. If, if we write a bunch of goals and, and they get crushed, I mean, we do them every time. We crush them every time. We probably haven't stretched ourselves very much. It's interesting to say, as you explained it, that we have an, an objective to, to not tax, tax people any more than necessary. But we don't need that as a goal. I think that's a basic thing that we all, that we always do. And it's immeasurable. The only way it's measurable, in a sense, is based on state law. Have we kept within two and a half? In other words, have we, have we increased our taxes two and a half or less? That might be a mark that says. That might be a, a mark that says, okay, you've achieved something, you haven't achieved something. My suggestion is that it does say without an override. That's the objective. It's, will we meet the objective? I think we all hope we will, but if we don't, okay, that's a goal that we didn't meet. And that to me is all right. As long as we agree that we do want to do it without an, an override. If that's an objective, it's one of mine if we can, and move for that as we go along.
My only concern with putting with no override is we have not been presented with the facts of, of what the needs are yet. So for us to say, we don't care at this point, what comes before us. We're saying right now there will be no override. I think that's premature to say, I would love to minimize and have no override. But if something comes up that we feel is really critical to invest in for either the town or the schools, I wouldn't want to handcuff us and say, we missed that goal. Because we haven't been presented with the facts yet.
So. Following, following reasons. That's fine. I mean, that's all right. We can explain those after the fact.
I don't want to say it's a missed goal because at, at this point, my goal is to try to meet as many needs as we can while minimizing the tax implications. And there are many ways to go about that, but to just say, our goal is no override. And if we don't do that, we have failed that goal. I, I, I don't know. Marshall, were you going to say something?
Well, I was just going to say that I can, you know, your, your, the discussion kind of sounds like by saying minimizing, it can still be underneath the override. It could be, you know, a 1% increase instead of a 2%. So it could be even less than an override tax burden by saying minimizing tax burden, if you know what I'm saying.
Yes.
You know, I, it's probably unrealistic to say that we would do, you know, less than the, the minimum amount allowable without an override. But that could be a goal as well to say, you know what, we can even be more obscure. We can even do better than just up to that point and not going over that point. And if you set the bar at only an override, then you basically give yourself all the room up to an override. Where I'm going to guess some residents say, well, do you have to take every bit of that room? Realistically, we probably do. But if we're truly goal setting, it can be even more stringent. And, and I think the way Lynn's wording, i- it works either way. If, if it's an override and we still feel like we've done everything we can, then we met that goal. But if it comes in even less than an override, then we still met that, if that makes sense.
Yeah. So we could meet.
It does. It makes good sense.
From the point of view of making a, a goal, if we don't have an override, we met that goal. Can we do better as far as budgets that don't, that are less than two and a half, two and a half amounts or something? Absolutely. That, that doesn't take away from that. This is one way to measure a goal, but I, if we don't want it that way, that's, that's fine.
Uh, Boyd, any feelings on your part?
No, I, I think we're grasping for straws here and, um, I, I don't have a problem with the way it's written.
Um, minimize the overrides or, um, the overall tax burden to residents. That was my suggestion.
Yeah.
Either way, just which one.
I like it just the way it is.
The one you just read.
Yeah.
The way she just read it, right?
The way you just read it.
I, I read too. I read too. So.
No, you, you're saying, Boyd, if I may be clear, the word override or no?
No. That's, you didn't use the word override at all.
No, it, it's in this sentence right now. So Boyd, do you like it the way?
I'm looking, I'm looking, bear with me.
And the suggestion you had took out the word override altogether.
Yes, which is why I was asking Boyd, which one he liked, the one with word override or the one without.
Or the one saying overall tax burden.
Overall tax burden.
Overall tax burden, I would prefer.
Yep. All right.
Okay. All right. Um, any other changes to the A and B?
So in, in B, uh, it reads evaluate broadening the five-year financial model, revenue and, and expenditures. And then with the wording to include annual changes by line item. Not totally sure what that means, but I, I think.
That was the one from yours, Dick. I tried to shrink the words down a little.
So, so the reason I'm saying, let me explain. If we try to do it by line item, essentially that what that is, is the model that we have now for the budget. And we only do that for the current year, but somebody could create a budget for the next three years out or four years out. And then change, change line items. It probably doesn't help us very much. Here's the idea of a five-year financial model. If you have a robust model of some, we have a model, any model is better than none. But a more, if you want a robust model, it would allow you to do things like what if? What if we increased the, the longevity by a bonus by X amount? This year, this year, this year, what would that do to the budgets, the taxes, what, you know, how much additional costs would it be on that? Also, if, if you increase salaries and wages by 2%, what would that represent? Now that's not of, that would be of the, the regular employees or maybe you have separate categories for each of the union ones. So that you can easily put in those things and understand the effect of a change in a union agreement on the overall budget going out. So five years, whatever the case may be. So it's, what you're looking for is parameters that are significant drivers that you can do what ifs with, not necessarily changing a line item. More, more often it's a matter of changing a percentage, but not.
Okay, sorry. It was, um, then a bad attempt at my part to, to put into smaller words what you had said. What if we put evaluate broadening the five-year financial model to facilitate evaluating, evaluating various scenarios?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Great. And so, yes, that, that, that would be great. Um, think, think about just ending after the parentheses expenditures. But you, you, you explain it better in some ways by, by putting the initial words in there. That's fine with me.
Okay.
But as long as we understand, more important than the wording to me is that understand what I was intending, if that's okay with everybody, but the objective of a model and why, and why the word, uh, would, would I evaluate broadening? I use the word broadening or some, some people would say robustness. By having additional levers that you can put in there. What if the insurance increased, decreased by a percent? What do we think is going to have? All that sort of thing. Um, and I, and I, and it is something that you might continue to do over time to, to make it more robust. Thank you. That's it.
Um, can I just ask Catherine and Kevin, do we have any of this right now in the five-year model? Is this brand new? Um, is it in just enhancing it? Could you speak to it a little bit?
Yeah. Um, Kath, do you want to start? I, I, I can share some thoughts too.
It wouldn't be brand new. The, the last model that was put together, um, it does have like what if situations that we're in it that, um, it was when Sarah Guido was involved in, in Kelly. It, it does have what if scenarios, like if the free cash, not the free cash, if the cherry sheet were to change by a negative 3% or positive 3%, what would happen in the, in the five-year outlook?
So the point is, is that we do have a five-year model and it does have some elements in it. It wouldn't be a five-year model without those elements really.
You're right. It does need to be updated.
It does need.
It needs to be updated at this point.
Those elements need to be updated. That's fine. But that's an ongoing thing. That's not necessarily a goal. That's something we just have to do. I mean, it's part of the operating function. The, the suggestion here is that we add additional elements into the model to make the model a more robust model and therefore more useful in answering what-if questions.
Yes. Okay, very good.
So you changed the wording and added, that's fine with me.
I did. Yep. Um, okay. Any last comments on the fiscal management or are we good to go to the last one?
I'm good.
Okay. So, uh, resident safety and amenities. Um, so the only thing I would, I would say at this point that I would pull out was B. Because I had a conversation with our, our fire chief and the plans to address the vulnerabilities from the MVP hazard mitigation. Those plans have been developed. They've been sent off to the state for approval, pending approval, then we're allowed to start to apply for grants. So I had put here develop plans, but they are already developed. And so it's now in a, once they're approved, it's more an implementation, kind of an operational role that I don't think we need to get involved in.
Well, if you took out the word develop plans and just left it as address vulnerabilities in the documented in the MVP and the hazard mitigation reports, that would be appropriate. But, um, and much, much of it will be being done through, I assume through, uh, our, uh, emergency management coordinator, which.
Yeah, that's just something that they would be doing. I don't know how much we would be helping, you know.
Yeah.
It's going to happen, it's going to happen whether we write it down as a goal or not.
Exactly.
Thank you. Next.
Okay.
So I, I would suggest, uh, as a quick one, I don't, I'm not sure it's a, it's a goal of ours to reinstitute the police citizen academy. I mean, if the chief wants to do that, it's, I don't think it's a big goal to, to do it. And, and how do you measure X number of academies that were going to run whatever? It was in place. If he chooses to do a few more of them, fine. It was a volunteer thing, as I understand it from the police. I would kind of leave that up to them. Uh, I, I, have we been getting a lot of letters from?
No, I only put it on there because Kevin had mentioned it. So I didn't want to take anything off that had been mentioned. But I'm perfectly fine with reducing the list because it's operational in nature.
Right. Okay.
I agree.
So, uh, E, plan and implement a program to manage. Um, the one thing I wanted to be careful of is remove, removal of damaged or diseased town trees on, uh, town trees and those. I understand what that says. That says trees that are on town property. I mean, that somebody would say, you mean the trees in town? We have a lot.
Is on town property.
So I would change the wording to simply say diseased trees on town property. So it's clear that we're not trying to go onto other people's property and.
Or alternatively, just turn town into town owned.
Town owned trees?
Yeah.
Oh yeah. I, I think, but. Yeah.
I mean, we only own the trees that are on town property. I'm, I, you know, economy of words tells me that that is a single word rather than a whole phrase. But whatever.
And Kevin, did you have a comment?
Yeah, ma'am, sure. Just, just a couple of quick thoughts. D and E. I've had a chance to talk with Gary Wilds on D since our last meeting on this. One of the things when it comes to sidewalk plans is, is really funding at the end of the day. Uh, we don't have it built into our operating budget. And when we repair sidewalks, it's not typically to add new unless we're say getting funding to do a complete street project or something like that. That coupled with the tree removal, we, we've gone multiple times to the.
Thank you.
Looking for more funding in that line. And we have $10,000 roughly, um, for tree removal, for, for example. And that, that covers all of our emergency storms, tree removal. Um, we always max that out every year, if not go over. Our tree warden does a good job of trying to keep it at that level at the end of the day, but we could have one or two storms and max that out. So these, these items, I just want to sort of put it out there that if it's something that we want to sort of change operationally how we've, we've, we've done things. Not a bad idea. It's just a matter of understanding there's a real funding component that would need to come along with it in order to allow us to do either of those specific items.
Kevin, does the tree warden right now have a, a, a program or a plan in place and, and keep an eye on the trees most in, in jeopardy of disrupting, you know, travel or electrical? To your point, because we don't have a lot of money. Do they know which ones to be addressed if, with the money that we have?
So the money we have is typically held for emergency response, not necessarily preemptive. Sometimes it's preemptive. But most times it's, it's used in, in, after, after a storm. He, last time I, I think I heard Dave had a list of like 35 specific trees that he's keeping an eye on right now. But again, because of our financial constraints, we haven't been able to proactively address them. What we do do, however, is we leverage other resources. Sometimes, for instance, national grid will, we have a number of above ground wires in town. And so as such, they have, national grid has, as a whole, um, department that removes trees and trim trees to ensure that wires don't come down during storms. And we've actually had a lot of activity recently in Thompson to help us with that. And continue to leverage those resources and the relationships we have with national grid to help us supplement our existing budget.
So the tree warden proactively reaches out to national grid to find out if they can help get rid of diseased trees or cut back based upon his priority list?
In essence, it's not as to.
No, I think there's two different things. Yeah. I think it's two different things, isn't it?
Well, so there's the tree trimming program. Typically it's a five-year program. They do 20% of the town in a given year, then they move to another one, the tree trim. So the list that he has is outside of that. There's always the chance that there's one of those trees or one of the trees that national grid removes. But national grid, unless Dave asks specifically for them to go over to a specific tree, because it's really, you know, at the end of its life and there's real major concerns. Um, and it's, there's a wire consideration typically falls on the town.
And as you know, national grid doesn't just do diseased trees, damage or diseased trees. They'll take down a healthy tree if it's pretty obvious that that tree is threatening the wires. At a minimum, they'll take out heavy branches on that tree if they think it'll, it'll hurt. So in their case, they, they're trying to ensure the integrity of the electrical system year after year. And I didn't, I didn't understand that 20%, but that's good to hear. I didn't, that's 20% of their program or their estimate over five years. So that doesn't mean it's everything. But yes, uh, and I do know that Dave Bond some years ago had 50, so maybe we're doing pretty good. The point is, as you mentioned, Kevin, this is a reactive program that we have. And the question is, should we be active because the, the the problems that are generated when these things happen are at the wrong time. Like when there's a big storm of some sort, a blizzard or a hurricane or something like that. Not always, but often it, it happens. Those are the wrong time to have these problems. Uh, if we are proactive in it and take out trees that are a challenge to us, it's better. The problem is compared to when I moved here and Cam, whatever, the trees really are that much older, 40 years older and that much bigger, many of them. And especially some of these oaks, because I've seen this, um, they, uh, they get this fungus on the inside there and they look great. If you're an arborist, you know they're not. And if you're David Bond, you probably know they're not too. But they're just getting old and they need to be dealt with because when they come down, they take a lot out with them.
Kevin, I, I just throw this out to you between the fire chiefs, um, hazard mitigation and vulnerability plans, and some of that I know is trees because yeah, I, I saw the discussions, I, I saw the reports that were written, um, between that and Dave Bond putting together a list and staying on top of what trees are in trouble. Are we getting down into the weeds here and getting very operational? I mean, is there anything that the board can bring to this? That they're not already doing?
Support through the operating budget process. If there's somewhere weak in the second step of the budget process, you know, we're going to balance our budget the best we can, provide something to you folks that probably doesn't have much growth in certain places. If I hear from you folks consistently that you want us to consider doing something somewhere different, you know, I can try to put double our budget for trees, for example, or sidewalk, the bridge sidewalk line item within Gary's budget, 70 something thousand, I believe. You know, we can add to that to do sidewalks and add new sidewalks if that's a priority, but that, that would then have to go through the FinCom. And I guess advocacy and support, if something like, if I hear from you folks from a leadership standpoint, these are things that you're hearing, things you want us, you want me as the manager to provide avenues to achieve these. That's where I would go to. And then I would just ask for support through the budget process if it's something that.
So going back to the trees then, and, and you're right on. The issue there is not so much the fact that we know about trees that are bad. It is a funding issue. But I would say that if, if I was asked to come up with a, a plan, the first part in, in this removal of damaged and diseased trees would be to identify them, make sure that we have a good list of what they are and an agreement that is. And maybe we have to go out and spend some services in Auburn in a couple of cases. In other words, Dave might say this, this, and this tree, give us whatever the case may be. But the idea of that, of coming up with a plan, of, of an understanding of what our issues are. And then secondly, an estimate of what it would take to do that, that much money. Uh, and then trying to put together a plan, which would, might very well include a ward article that asks for $40,000 or $50,000 to take out this many trees because we see them as dangerous and let it, let it be up to the people, so to speak. If we want it, if we think it's the right thing to do, then bring it up to the people and try to have the justification as to why it's worth it to be proactive in it. That's what I would see under that particular item where it says remove damaged and diseased trees. Maybe there's a better way of saying it, but that was the intent of it.
You know, I, I think it's a good thing to do. I think between the fire chief with the hazards she's identified and the tree warden, that's what they do. and the tree warden, that's what they do. That's their job. So we could say to them, can you let us know similar to what you do with the other departments, Kevin? What do you need to do your job well? You know, and, and Dave may say, these 10 trees should come down. I know every year we don't have enough money, but I recommend these 10 come down. That's what he
So we know.
Right. But I'm, I'm saying, I don't think it needs to be brought up to the board level. I think, you know, that Kevin can work with Dave and with Jen and, and put together the best estimate. I mean, we're asking him to be a little bit of a miracle worker here. So we want no override, but we want new connecting sidewalks. We want all the damaged and diseased trees to come down. So, you know, it's, it's that balancing act that we've talked about, you know? What is the best thing for safety? What is it gonna cost? And we make those decisions. But I, I think this tends to get very operational. And so I would, I would let Jen and Dave do their job under Kevin, and I don't think we need to get involved in the trees, but I do think it's a valid question to pose to them at budget time, Kevin, and see what they come back with, would be my take on it.
Yes, I would say the fact that we're talking about tree fungus says that we've gotten a little too
Going back to D then, I guess the discussion here is that, that of sidewalks. And certainly there's an issue there of money for sidewalks. And the idea of these will be new, they're certainly not repairs, but it is, having this as an objective means that it's something that we're looking out for in grants or various help from the state things that they may have. DCR may have some things that they want to try to help out with. Maybe we have some areas that we could get to, DCR land or something, if we could do them. So that's, that was why I have it there, not necessarily to say that we're going to increase taxes, although if we decide we want to put it down as a warrant article to do a certain thing, fine. One of the things that it would take, though, if we're gonna spend, if we have some money to spend, would be the design, design, picking one and having a design. As I said at the time, when, last time we talked about this, I suspect with the kind of money coming out of Washington, this whole idea of shovel-ready is going to be there. And it might be interesting to have at least one shovel-ready project for sidewalks that we could say, yep, we're ready to go. Now, we know the amount of money for this. We're not talking about the $77,000 in the roads budget. We'd eat all of that up and not be able to do an entire sidewalk. But we might be able to use some money that we have as selection special to do the design work, for example, of one of them. But it's an objective. It's a goal. That's why I put it there. There were some logical places we would help, and the schools might be interested because we may be able to pick up some additional students that would be healthy to walk, who cannot walk now because it's too dangerous. They don't have sidewalk.
How about if we rewarded it, Dick? Instead of putting it down that we're going to actually construct these, identify and prioritize the need for connecting sidewalks. And that way
Great. I didn't see that change. Oh.
No, I'm just saying it now, based on what we just said.
Great. You know what? And then hopefully next year, we add the word construct, because we did the first one, it's worked out and we've gotten a grant. That's great.
Yeah. Okay. So it looks like we've
This is written for, as we said, a long-term plan. I clearly understand this is a long-term process, but we could say, and last year in our goals, there was a preamble that said, these things are not necessarily all going to be completed in this year. But it, to me, it's something that we, as a board, should think about, and maybe we don't want to set it as a priority or goal. But I think we, perhaps because we know of, we know several of them, and we know that people in the open space survey indicated that's something they wanted.
I like the idea of something being shovel-ready. And this is just saying, Gary, you know, if you had to pick one
Identify and design. Excellent.
Yeah, which, which one is ready? All right. Any, any other changes?
No, I think your, your objective was to vote on this. Once we've done the edits today, we, you know, there's probably no need to see a clean version. We've talked them all through in detail, right?
I, I think if you trust me to put together what we just talked about, I can send it back out to you and we can just take a vote on it now.
Yeah. I mean, I think we I, I think in the sense that I would say a motion to approve the goals stated in August 17th, 2021, list of goals with the amendments that we discussed at this meeting. Now, if we're uncomfortable with what the amendments are, then we should hold off, but I think we discussed them.
I don't know. I think we're, I think we're all on the same page at this point.
Excellent. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and we'll go to roll call. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermuda's aye, so it passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for all your input into this. Moving on to our next issue is communication. So I'll turn this over to Marshall and Cam.
Uh, thank you. So I, I will say, in respect of our visitors' time, because Sharice and Dr. Morrison and Chief Collins-Brown are all here at my invite to, to basically answer questions, because there's a degree to which I think we already have a lot of agreement. We already, as a board, understand some of our communication deficiencies. So I don't want us to have unnecessary conversation. So I, I will just say a little something. I think Cam is gonna say a little something. And then basically, it's going to be, do you have any questions? And again, one of the reasons, one of the, and I'll, I'll begin by saying that we are both looking at, or talking about immediate changes that we can make to be more pro, or to make our communication as a town more proactive and more nimble in the reactive. Because right now, I think our only channels for communication are the town website and what is probably inaccurate to call, but I'll call reverse 911 and the text messaging system. And I'm of the personal opinion that those second two really should only be used for more emergent things, more vital, you know, not, hey, we just want to let you know about whatever, but something that you need to know about right now, which is not the vast majority of the communication I think we need to do. And I think we all agree that our website right now is not where it needs to be, which is why there's obviously a project underway to make it better. So in the immediate, one of the things I think we can and should do is the creation of a town Facebook page, an official one, that is controlled by, populated by, at some degree moderated by, though as part of our discussion, I don't think it'll need much moderation, by us, by the town. And I think what it will serve as versus someplace that is a forum for discussion and opinion and all of that, it will serve as a reliable, trustworthy voice of information, of facts, not opinions, of facts. Things as simple as, there's a select board meeting tonight. Here's a link to the agenda and some of the items of note that we'll discuss. The Council on Aging has an event tonight. Any zoning board, really any of our town people or town boards and committees that have meetings, those agendas, those links to join those meetings for as long as we're still virtual, could be there. To be responsive to more minor things like the offensive stickers that were found on some light poles downtown earlier this summer, we would have been able to say, we found these things, we address these things. If you see any more or what have you, just know that we know about it, we're aware, and they're not welcome here. Something like that. That's what I envision a Facebook page being. And it is free in that it's Facebook, it's free. You know, we do have some questions we need to answer in terms of where the content will be written, how it will be written, who will write it. I would suggest, and I may be leaping ahead here, that we not allow comments on our posts, because if you do, that's where moderation comes in, and that's where conversation rages that we're not interested in following along. If people want to take a town of Topsfield Facebook post and share it to the residents' page and discuss it over there, have at it. Do what you gotta do, but that has nothing to do with us. Our page is nothing but facts. One of the reasons, or the main reason that I've asked Sharice and Dr. Morrison and the chief to be here is because they already have active Facebook pages. And I think that if you have questions about how they would work, how successful they've been, what kind of communications they've used them for, I think that they could speak much more intelligently to that than I could, because I've never created one of these things quite like this. But before I turn it over to them, I would turn it over to Cam to see, I'm sure I've left some holes in
Not, not many. Not many. You know, I think one of the things that we want to do with this is use it as an opportunity to amplify the content of our other organizations in town Marshall alluded to. And that's really important. There is, there is no, you know, single aggregator of all that content. We can play that role as much as we can. I do think townspeople would be very interested in learning about state-level mandates, about learning about grants awarded. There, there are numerous things we can do with this. And Marshall, I, I'm in agreement about turning off the comments. We have plenty of forum pages in this town, plenty of place, places people like to, you know, spout off. That's not at all what this is about. Marshall, you are exhaustive, so let, let's, let's listen to the school board.
Great. Sharice, thank you so much again for, for being here and excited to hear how you got your page started, who writes it, who updates it, how much time does that take? Because everything, while the social media is free, it does take someone's time at town hall, and who might be the appropriate people in town hall from your experience to do that work. So turn it over to you.
Thank you. So I would say that one step in our communication plan before we developed a Facebook page was the development of our school committee meeting notes, which I think most of you have seen. And so the idea behind that was the fact that minutes, as wonderfully as they may be written, are not often a, a very clear picture for people who were not at the meeting to get a feel for what really went on there. So we wanted to increase transparency. We wanted to increase communication with the community. So four years ago, when I joined the school committee, we decided that communication was very important, and we decided that one of us, so at the time it was myself, would have the role of taking notes during the meeting and then turning that into a draft of school committee meeting notes. So that is the thing that is most primarily published on our Facebook page. So that's the reason that I'm bringing this up. So we started that at that time, and I was the person doing that. And the process for that was that I would take the notes, I would write a draft, and then Katrina Ferrer was chair at that time. I would send it to Katrina. She'd go through, edit, and, you know, check for accuracy, and then she would send it along to Scott, and then he would do the same. And then once it went through that approval process, then it was okay to be shared with the public. So at that point, it would be sent over to the principals who put it in their school emails, you know, out to the school community, and then I would post it on the Facebook group. So that, I'm just giving that background, because when you think about what you might want to post, that's, that's the meat of what we are posting there, in case that's, you know, something that appeals to you.
Sharice, just a couple of questions about that, if I could ask you. So do you also then do minutes in addition to the meeting notes?
Yeah, so we have a recording secretary who has the job, who is not one of us, who has the job of taking minutes, and she submits them, and that's what's on the town website, are the actual minutes from the meeting. But they're very bare bones compared to our school committee meeting notes, which are in the form of paragraphs, you know, kind of summarizing each section of our meeting. Because if you, if you looked at, you know, your conversations tonight and what would appear in minutes, it would be, it would not, it would not really show or convey the nuances of your conversation or the highlights of the conversation. It's usually more like this person made a motion, this person seconded, then, and then it was, you know, an anonymous vote or, or, you know, something like that. So it, the point is to give more of a clear picture and to make it readable where minutes are not so readable, so that way people can read it and feel like, okay, I know what happened at the school committee meeting.
Does your school committee approve, vote to approve the meeting minutes before they get posted for everyone to read?
The, the minutes by the recording?
The meeting notes that you're doing?
So, no. So the, the, the notes, it's just the person that takes the notes, and then the chair, and then the superintendent. And so that's the process. So it's not really adding to the workload of the entire committee, which is helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So, and also I want to just clarify, when we're saying Facebook page, it's not actually a Facebook page, because on a page, you don't have the ability to shut off comments. So we have a public Facebook group, because that is how you have the ability to shut off comments. So in order, in order to form the group, you would need an email address to create a Facebook account, you know, as, as you may have done yourselves in your personal life. So for us, our technology director created an email address that was specifically for the creation of a Facebook profile. It's not used for anything else. It's literally just a way to open up a Facebook account. And then from there, I created the Facebook group, and we really publicized that in our school committee meeting notes and, you know, discussed it in our meetings, so it would show up in both minutes and meeting notes. And people found it that way. So we, people join our public Facebook group, and I approve them into the group, but there's not anyone that we don't approve into it because it's a public group. But we, we do not accept friend requests, just as another little side note of how this is set up, because often, because we have a Facebook profile to create a Facebook group, we'll receive friend requests. We don't accept those, because I'm not going to be in charge of this forever, obviously. You know, we don't want any attachments or allegiances or anything like that. Anyone can be in the group, but there's no actual friend requests happening. And then from there, we publish mostly our agendas for every meeting, and we publish our school committee meeting notes. We always make sure to turn off the comments. And sometimes we have had other messages, like if Scott has sent out a message to the community, and we want to amplify it and make sure that people see it, we will copy and paste it exactly in the form that he had it, and then put it into the group and shut the comments off. So it's just another place for people to see it. But for us, the biggest reason that we wanted to be on Facebook is because we wanted to meet people where they're at. You know, that it's, I'm sure that you see this in the town Facebook groups, but people will post questions in the Facebook group that they could easily just click over and open up a browser and go to the town website and find the information right there. But people don't do that. You know, they want to look for information where they're at, which is Facebook. And so we wanted to provide accurate factual information and not have people who thought maybe they could speak for us, you know, try to answer for us or to give color to something that, you know, we could just have more control over. So the, the other idea behind it too was that if, let's say, we see there's some issue, you know, kind of blowing up on social media, that people are, let's say, providing incorrect information related to the schools, having a big question that keeps popping up all over the place, we, as a committee, have a rule to not comment on or engage in any conversations related to the schools on social media. But what we can do is if we see that going on, we could check in with each other and say, you know what, it might be helpful if we put up a post with the facts about this, you know, whatever the issue is. And we wouldn't say, we saw this in the residents of Topsfield Facebook group, but we could just simply put up, here are the facts about the upcoming override, you know, and just bullet point them. And again, you know, using the same system of making sure, you know, I'm, I'm checking it, Scott is checking it, and, and put it up there. Because that way, anybody who is looking for factual information could, you know, as Marshall or Cam said, take that information, they could forward it into whatever forum they want, you know, but at least they can present factual information that came from us in their discussions. And people don't really do that, you know, if they have to go off of Facebook and grab it from somewhere else. So we have found it to be really helpful. I think we have several hundred people in our Facebook group at this point. So it seems to be something that people appreciate. And sometimes it's just, even though we send out these notes, you know, via the principals' emails to the school community, you know, sometimes people miss an email or they just, you know, didn't, didn't open it when they wanted to. They see it on Facebook and they catch it then. So it's, I think it's just amplifying our communication, it's clarifying our communication, and it's giving us It's clarifying our communication and it's giving us, um, a place to have consistent messaging. And that was, you know, for me, because I've done a lot with social media for work and in my personal life, it was a comfortable thing, but, you know, Scott, I think, could maybe speak to the position of being a person who's not on social media, um, who, it's, is not someone that generally has a Facebook page or anything of the sort. But I think maybe he can explain what value he sees in it coming from that perspective because my perspective is a little bit more obvious since media is something that's comfortable for me. But it was, I think Scott's perspective.
Sharice, could I just ask you a question, a couple of questions before we go to Dr. Morrison? So are you the only person who updates your page? Is there just one?
Yes.
Okay. Do you discuss with your group what's going to go out there or do you sometimes just make a call yourself as to what goes up on the site?
I, I would say make the call myself and consult with Scott generally.
A combination. And how much time would you say you take or you spend a week, uh, doing this role?
Um, minutes. I mean, it's so simple to post something. Um, the, the thing that takes more time is the actual writing of the school committee notes. And I became chair in my second year on the committee, so I could no longer take the notes and, and write out the, um, you know, leaving the meeting. Um, so Andrew Prazar has had that role and he's done a fantastic job, um, taking notes and, um, you know, writing them up. And then he emails them to me and, you know, I go through it and we do it in Google Docs. So I suggest changes and track them throughout and then send that version to Scott. And then he, he goes through and, you know, makes, checks it for accuracy and make sure everything looks as it should. And from there, then I go ahead and post it on social media. So it's, it's a matter of minutes really.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Morrison, thank you again for being here tonight. Um, we appreciate your input into how you think this is working and any other thoughts you want to share?
Yeah, thanks Lynn. I would say that, uh, Sharice really hit it all on the head. The one, uh, glaring inaccuracy that I would point out is that she said she wouldn't be doing this forever and she doesn't realize that her last term she was elected for life. So that's the one thing we just need to clarify here because, you know, that's an important thing. Um, so I, I would agree with Sharice, uh, with everything she said, I find it to be very valuable. Uh, you know, it took us a while to kind of figure out how we were going to get it up and running and what were the background settings that we needed to kind of work through and to make sure that it was like a one-way communication, factual communication. Sharice and I have worked together long enough now that we know each other's communication style and so it stays as a pretty tight process. I sometimes have to get a reminder from Sharice, you know, just like, hey, that's still in your email, can you just take a peek at it? And that's always very helpful. Uh, but once I take a look at it, it is, um, you know, it's minutes on my end as well because again, Andrew does such a great job and Sharice before him in terms of capturing the real sort of readable way to understand the meeting. I, you know, when you read the minutes, it's just, as you guys know, it's a, you know, summary of votes and, and, and quick discussions and, you know, if someone wants the full meeting, they have to watch the meeting. And this really, I think, presents it in a way that highlights the important things that are happening. Here's the upcoming meetings, here's the members' names and addresses, email addresses. And I just, I like the word amplification that Sharice used. I think that, you know, there have been times that we've had to get a message out, um, you know, outside of the meeting minute notes and to have that, um, you know, bullhorn, I guess you could kind of call it, that's maybe too strong of a word, but I think you get the visualization of what I'm trying to say there. Uh, it's a nice way to sort of amplify, uh, the message that we need to get out and then sending it through the principals as well. Once I kind of take a final look at it, I'll email Sharice and Andrew back and say, looks great guys, made a couple of minor edits. Sharice will immediately take it, put it up on the Facebook page, I'll forward it to Sarah and Carol, ask them in their next communication out to families, which is usually the next day or two, um, to send that out as well. So I have found it to be, uh, a very productive method of communication. It was one of the goals of the school committee to, you know, I heard you guys talking about goals tonight, uh, increase communication and develop this kind of a forward-facing communication model. And it's since been emulated in the other, uh, two communities. Uh, Bockshitz, um, has had a similar model, not so maybe the, uh, degree and comprehensiveness, um, as Topsfield and Middleton has, uh, taken a crack at it as well. And so, um, it's certainly something that was worthy of emulation, you know, across the three towns. And that's part of the beauty of my job is that I get to share best practices that are happening, uh, in one of the communities with other communities and we take those best practices and, um, try to implement them in different places.
That's great, thank you. Um, would you, uh, have any words of wisdom, uh, of things to avoid pitfalls that when you started to do this, that you'd say, oh, I would warn you, don't do this, or this took too much time, or just steer us away from things to avoid?
I think they were already identified Lynn in the sense of definitely no comments because as, as Marshall said, that then involves moderating that and that's not a, a, a game that we want to, uh, devote a time to, right? We have other operations that we need to run and, and lead and manage. Um, that's not something that we wanted to make sure we engaged in. And, and certainly if it's something that, uh, it was interest among, uh, the select board, I'd be happy to, uh, have our tech people, uh, just have a conversation with anyone, uh, on the town side in terms of, you know, what do the settings need to look like, the email address, what's the setup look like? I mean, we're certainly happy to, um, you know, share thoughts and ideas on the best way to set it up, um, if that's something that the, the select board decides to pursue.
Thank you. Um, any questions from the board for either Sharice or Dr. Morrison?
I, I don't know if I have any questions. Well, I do have. Uh, Sharice, how long have you been doing this?
Uh, this is my fourth year.
Okay. Um, uh, we, we all, we all stress over the ability to communicate with our voters and our citizens. And, uh, we should always be looking for ways to in, improve that communication. And it sounds like you guys have done that. Both of you have said that it has increased, um, the communication with the school boards and the school committees, uh, with the, with your, with your citizens. Uh, and it behooves us to do that too. Um, being the age that I am, I am not into Facebook and I don't understand Facebook. So I've got to, I've got to leave it to younger, more agile brains than mine to make sure that we don't fall into, uh, a, a situation that's out of control. We all hear about all of the miscommunications, uh, on social media. And, uh, so I, that would be concerning to me. Uh, but you guys have said that that's not much of an issue. And, uh, so I'm, at this point in time, I'm willing to accept your word for it and leave it to, uh, uh, younger minds than mine to move forward with this.
Thanks Boyd.
As you said, uh, it only takes minutes a, a week to load them up, but then you indicated that yes, it's the writing of them that takes a while. Based on your experience for a one-hour meeting, roughly how long does it take somebody to write them up?
Um, I, I think, I'm, you know, thinking back to when I wrote them myself, um, it, it would depend. I mean, it would depend an hour.
Thank you.
Um, but, but nothing, um, nothing crazy. You know, I, I, I would guess Andrew is probably even faster than I am. Um, you know, whoever has the, the best skillset in the group for kind of note-taking and, um, then taking that information and putting it in readable format. I think, you know, it's, it's not hard for somebody who's kind of used to that role or has experience with that role for sure. Um, you meet more than we do. So there's that consideration. But of course, you know, you wouldn't have to start with this notes format. I mean, this is what we chose to do. And I think, um, you know, the fire department does a great job of taking a very different approach with their social media, which I'm sure Chief General will speak to, but, you know, they, um, are more kind of characterizing events that are, that have gone on or will go on. And, um, you know, they do that kind of, I guess, an as-needed basis. Whereas for us, we're keeping it, we don't have a page, it's a group. And as Boyd, you know, was just alluding to, there is no, there is no conversation, there is no way for people to, um, kind of take our information and run with it because it's closed. There is no way to comment on it, there's no way to have a conversation right there. And if people want to, um, you know, screenshot it then and put it somewhere else, that, that's fine because it's gone through a kind of vetted approval process. So it's, it's pretty, it's pretty neat and tidy as far as a process goes, I would say.
And again, profile is the technique that you use to, to allow you to do that without getting comments.
A, a Facebook group. So ha, having a
Facebook group, okay.
Public Facebook group. You have the profile, it's just your way into Facebook. And then, um, the public Facebook group gives you the ability to shut off the comments on your
Sharice, isn't the page, nice to see you by the way.
Nice to see you.
Fun to be seeing you in this environment. Um, isn't the pa, I mean, my take has always been the page is more for sort of constituents and more of a government-related page, whereas groups are more sort of shared interest in you allow certain people in type thing. Um, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought page was more appropriate for this kind of, this kind of, uh, format.
That, that's what I thought at first Cam and, and you know, when Lynn was asking like, is, are there any mistakes in the beginning, you know, that you, you could learn from? I would say when I was first looking into this for the committee, I immediately thought it would be a Facebook page. But then I realized that you can't shut the comments off on a Facebook
Thank you. Okay, okay, thanks.
That's, that's why, um, you know, we couldn't go there.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Do you use the group for any emergency information? Uh, I understand I may not be the only, but if there's some type of an emergency, do you repeat it on this particular thing just to get it out to more people?
Yeah, that, that's, um, what I meant when I was saying that sometimes we take in Dr. Morrison's communications, if there's been something that he's sent out.
Oh, that email thing, yeah.
And then we would just basically copy exactly word for word what he said and put it up there and just say, um, you know, please review this communication from Dr. Morrison that was sent to your email inboxes earlier, something like that, and then have it right below.
Kevin, did you have a question or a statement?
Yeah, Dr. Morrison, just for clarity sake, this is really something that's from posting perspective, the school committee and obviously Sharice, who are doing the, the posting, is there, they're grabbing your information that you put out there, they're taking their, their notes. Is, from your perspective, Dr. Morrison, how much are you contributing to the page directly outside of pre, pre-pinion material?
Yeah, pre Kevin, uh, very little. Um, you know, again, it's, it's the, the notes right from the meeting. Andrew really does a great job summarizing them and I think he's got a, you know, a good system in place at this point. And, um, they come to me, um, as Sharice had mentioned, sort of at the very end and, and I do the, the scan of them. And again, the Google Doc thing I think is key. I don't know if the board uses Google or not, but that to me is key because I can see Sharice's edits that she has made. And again, having worked together for a while now, I think we understand each other's communication style and I'll go in and it's typically just accept, 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 accept. And I might change a few things around just wordsmith wise and, uh, just to, you know, for clarity of message. And it's, uh, you know, it doesn't, it, to me, it's sometimes just the reminder that they need to go back into the inbox because they, uh, you know, they pile up for all of us and
I understand that.
In terms of getting that out, but, uh, nothing pre Kevin, all, all post and then Sharice takes it and then, uh, it goes right up on the Facebook, um, page.
Now, I've done my own survey of town administrators and, and other communities that are doing it or not doing it. And there's some that are, some that aren't, um, and I haven't seen anything that's not run from the town manager, town administrator, the mayor. Is there, i- in the, the school world, is this unusual, the model? Um, that it's not run through, say your office, Dr. Morrison, it's run by the school committee? Or is this sort of from a school perspective, how the Facebook pages are set up? I don't know schools.
Yeah, it's a good question Kevin. I, um, I could ask, I, I, I don't know off the top of my head of other places that necessarily, uh, do it this way, so to speak, uh, or do, you know, have a Facebook page? I, I think there are some school committees that may have a Facebook page, but it may not be this sort of tight process where, uh, information is, uh, you know, shared at the committee level and then, as I said, with the one person taking the notes and then sort of, uh, going through the chain and then, uh, the posting part of it. So I wouldn't be able to speak, you know, um, in an educated manner as to how other districts are doing it. Uh, we have found that it works very well, uh, on our end, uh, from the perspective of it's a school committee page and, uh, you know, there's involvement from, you know, all the main people who need to be involved in terms of the chair and then, you know, the administrative end of things.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Thank you, Sharice.
Yeah, Kevin, I can ask that actually a little bit more just because, um, when I was first interested in, um, bringing a social media presence and a, a, a school committee meeting notes to the school committee, it was when I first started. And so I happened to be doing the, um, in-person MASC training, which is the, the new member training for, um, school committee members from organizations all over Massachusetts. And so when I was at that training, I heard other school committee members and MASC members, the governing organization, talk about the fact that they were putting out, you know, they're not necessarily exactly like we do, um, but they had their own ways of communicating with the community and were maybe taking steps like we do to go beyond the, um, the minutes, you know, the, the official minutes of the meeting. So, um, that was what kind of gave me the validation that this is okay because this is something that other school committees across the state are doing. And then, um, we did check in Scott, I believe, with our, um, MASC rep at the time and also with our, um, school lawyer, you know, just to find out, are, are there any things that we need to be aware of? And of course, the, the biggest thing is, um, open meeting law, right? So, you know, that's why we specifically don't participate in any school discussions on social media because, you know, if I comment and then Andrew comments underneath, not realizing that I've already been there, you know, we're practically at a forum for a discussion. So that's why, um, the shutting off of comments was key in addition to, um, you know, not wanting to moderate discussion, but it allows us to not get tripped up with the one legal concern, which would be open meeting law. So, um, we don't have to deal with that at all.
Sharice, that's also something that the board had instituted a couple of years ago. We put together a social media policy that we don't comment as well, um, that, you know, sometimes Marshall has gone out there again with the facts, you know, just to provide either a link to the webpage or, or just to say the facts, but we don't comment in any way because it be, could be perceived that we're speaking for the board or for the town and we're not as an individual. So the, the, the one way, yeah, sounds great. Um, the, the Facebook gets so toxic, uh, the conversations are just endless, they could just be in endless loops. Um, i- if, um, if we could, I don't know if there's anything else Sharice or Dr. Morrison you'd like to add. I'd love to just hear from the chief, uh, because her perspective is a little different as to what she puts out there for information and see if she could add anything at this point to the conversation. So, um, Sharice or Dr. Morrison, is there anything else at this point that you'd like to share with us?
Um, no, I, I think, I think we've said everything that I was hoping to convey, um, but also if, if you want help, you know, if you just want to kind of sit on the computer at some, any, and just see what it would look like as far as creating a Facebook group and the kind of setting that we have on and, um, you just want to look at our group with us, I'm happy to sit with anyone and just kind of take you through that. So just let me know if you want that at any point.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Nothing from me, thank you.
Okay. Thank you Scott. Um, so chief, uh, anything that you'd want to add to this discussion about what you found with your Facebook group or what kind of information you put up there, how you approach it?
Sorry, can you, you can hear, can you hear me okay?
We can, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, that was a lot. Sharice did a great job with that. Ours is a page. Um, I was not, uh, I didn't want to do it. I wasn't, I was dragged into it because, um, like Boyd said, because of the younger people. Um, and it is, to be honest with you, it is how people, people communicate. Actually, Facebook is not even as, um, used as much as like Instagram and things like that, but it is another way to get your message out. And so what we found for us is initially, um, there was a lot of misinformation, um, being, um, publicly posted, emailed, et cetera, about the fire department. And it was a really good opportunity for us to share, uh, the facts. And, um, and so I, I would just say ours is a group, um, but, uh, Connor is the person who posts it all. A group of us give him information to post, but like Sharice said, that, uh, the work is in the writing and the, to make sure that it's factual and not, um, we, we be really careful, like you guys all do, not to comment on things, um, unless it's just a fact, not to get involved in, um, any of that toxic stuff like you mentioned. We learned pretty quickly. We learned pretty quickly, actually, when the sheriff's race was on, that people could tag you. And so we've had to set security so that people running for sheriff wouldn't tag our page and post things. We have the security settings are so that you can't post anything without it being approved by the administrator. So that's one way to protect the things that get written on it. And I just think overall, it's, we, we use it to educate people, to let people know things that are going on in real time. For me, it is time-consuming. Like I said, Connor manages it. He works four days on and four days off. So on his off days, you know, he's the administrator. It feels, I feel, we hate to bother him, but there's things that we want to post up. So I, he does a lot on his own time. So I do think that how it gets managed in a policy, like you said, you have a social media policy, what exactly would go on it and who has that authority and things like that. Those, I think, would be really important to work out. But it's time and time again showed that it's a really, another, another added way, as Sharice said and Dr. Morrison said, to reach people that, you know, maybe they might not click on the the town website, but they're already scrolling through Facebook or Instagram or whatever. And, and you can make it so it's, I'm sure everybody knows this, but on a, they can get pushed out to Instagram, Twitter and all that at the same time. So it's not any more work and all goes out. So I think it's, like I said, I was begrudgingly taken into it, but I do see the value in it. I see the hazards in it as well. But in general, it's been a really nice addition.
Chief, do you push out to Instagram and Twitter?
I actually took a class on how to tweet. I think it does. We don't do much tweeting, though. We don't do much, I don't, I don't know that answer. I'll have to get back to you on that. But I think we have our website, that's another thing. Our website has the ability, if we post stuff on our website, which is hosted by another agency now, hopefully we'll get it on the town website. But it, that does, when it gets posted on our website, gets posted to all modalities, too.
Oh, okay. And would you, would you know about how much time Connor spends? I mean, every department is different in how much time it takes to write and how to find the information and to post it. Would you have any idea what he spends per week? Jen?
Sorry.
There you go.
Sorry, the, the mechanics, the writing takes the time. Mechanics of posting it don't take time at all. But just getting it right is the main thing. And I think depending, like, you could put a quick post up, whatever, you know, tomato festival today. But that's easy. But the other things, like especially meaningful things that you don't want to be misconstrued and you want really factual, that, that takes time to write. So I think it, like Sharice said, it totally depends. And, and I think we all wish that we could do more. There's just not enough time in the day.
Would you say the writing might be a couple hours a week?
Yeah, I think so, especially if you really want to do it right. Like, if you really want to do it right, it's a great tool and you could do so much more. We, we just touch the bare bones and we could do so much more education and things like that. It's just, you know, there's simply not enough time in the day.
Okay. Thank you. Does the board have any questions for Chief?
No, thank you, Jen.
Okay, thank you so much, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
Okay, back to Marshall and Cam. Is there anything?
Sharice has.
Sorry, sorry, Sharice. Sorry, I just wanted to point out the one thing that Jen is saying about how you can, you know, have it post on Facebook and then push out to the other kinds of social media. That's something that she can do because she's using a Facebook page. But using, but using a Facebook group, it would not do that. And, and because we have a different setup where we don't want to allow comments, we, we don't do that because we would not be able to turn off comments on Twitter and Instagram. So just before, like you, you know, kind of go down that road and start to think about other forms, this is, this is the one that's the most controllable. And so I would say if you're going the group route, then just leave Twitter and Instagram alone because you can't turn the comments off.
Okay, thank you. Marshall or Cam, anything else to kind of wrap up the conversation?
Well, I will say that I have learned, thanks to Sharice, the difference between a group and a page because I most definitively had a page in my mind as what we would do. And I do know that while I was in this conversation, I checked out a couple of the towns that I know around here that have Facebook presences, and they do appear to be pages. Now, it turns out nobody actually comments on any of the posts beneath any of their pages, either that or they have active moderators who are deleting everything. So I'll admit that I did not know that distinction. And I guess we'll have to take a look at what that means. I will also say that while I enjoy the school committee notes, of which Sharice speaks, I did not, and I think still do not envision our doing a select board notes, if only for workload of doing that than, than anything. Beyond that, I'm, I'm happy to answer questions that other people may have or if Cam has a summary statement.
My summary statement is I, I think it's where people go for information and we need to be there. I've said it before, you know, we want to go where the game is being played. And it would be great if they were coming to our website in droves, but this, this is where we need to make a stand. And I think it'll be, I think it'll be a great enhancement for the town.
Thank you. And Marshall, I would agree with you. While I love the school notes and it really gives me a sense of being there, the select board is one of many parts of town government. There are many things besides detail about what we talked about for three hours every time we get together that people would be interested in knowing about. So I think we have a lot of information that is kind of geared up and ready to go that would be of interest to people. So we probably wouldn't start so much with the notes because there are so many departments within Town Hall that would have interesting and fun things to talk about. Kevin, did you have another comment?
So ma'am, Sharice, first, Sharice, Dr. Morrison, thank you so much for joining us tonight. Great information and taking the time. I know you all have lots of meetings as well. And so it's, it's great to see and appreciate the time tonight. To the board, you know, great conversation, important conversation. I would just say from my perspective as a town administrator, I agree with all the things that everyone's talked about with the benefits of social media. I think it's a place that we need to be. I agree. But I think the most important thing from my perspective is that we build the infrastructure to do it right. My biggest concern, and I think ma'am Sharice, you alluded to it, is that from a posting standpoint, I think it really has to originate out of, out of Town Hall. It really needs to be, and it can be dynamic and it can be very lively because there's a lot that we do on a daily basis, on a weekly basis. But, you know, two to three posts per week needs to be the minimum. I know Middleton, for example, sometimes they post once every three months, once, sometimes they post twice a week. I know that talking from the town administrator. Hamilton hired somebody part-time, 10 hours to do this for them and their, and their website so that they're, they're posting. You know, I've thought about the concept that maybe we offer a permanent internship opportunity, get some people from either Gordon or Endicott or Salem State or whatever to help us with getting that information out. But I think Chief said it really well. Posting's not the issue. It's putting a perfect message out there every time that hits all the important points and doesn't misrepresent the things that we're doing. And so, again, I know Marblehead doesn't, isn't doing anything. Andover has a person that's a full-time employee that does their PR on staff in the town administrator's or town manager's office there. So there's a lot of different ways to sort of look at this. I want to assure the board that this is something that, since it became on my radar as a priority over the last few months, specifically, I know Mr. Hook and I talked about this before he was even elected. But more recently, as it's ramped up coming into the town goals, that we're doing some real research. The team's working behind the scenes right now, trying to establish what the best model will be so that if, I should say, when we roll it out, it's, it has the built-in infrastructure that makes it successful. Because worst thing we can do is put something out there, put a couple of posts and walk away from it and not put all that information that we want to get out there. And part of it, too, is leveraging the fire department, the police department and others that already have existing pages to link that information into ours if we can. So we can have, you know, multiple things posting on the page from different places, if possible, within the department. So, I mean, there's a lot of work that we still need to do. But I'd, I'd very much welcome the opportunity to further discuss how we're going to do it moving forward. And just let me know when and where and we can do it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And thank you so much, Sharice and Dr. Morrison, for sharing your experience and insight with this. I mean, you've proven, along with Chief, that this works and it can work well. And it's just a matter of us figuring out how to do it best for us. So thank you so much. And Marshall and Cam, thank you for bringing this up and having it an agenda item for discussion. And any final comments before we do our final motion? No, all right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And roll call, Mr. Gant.
Aye.
Mr. Hook.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez is aye, so it passes unanimously. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Sharice.
Thank you, Scott.
Saves us a lot of time trying to reinvent the wheel. Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks very much.